Perfect. All right, welcome everybody to the Tuesday of August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Design Review Committee, a special meeting taking place. Yesterday's regularly scheduled meeting. And for the record, I can see that both members of the committee are present. As are. The city official as well as planners Hannah Beal and Betty Gumm. Are there any changes to the agenda?
None by staff.
Right. I'm. Seeing none by the committee members. Either will move to the consent agenda, which consists of the August first, two thousand and twenty-two minutes.
I didn't have any changes to the minutes, so. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you. And the next two items. Our public hearings, the first of which is subdivision fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, number two. Han sick towns homes subdivision at thirty-nine hundred North Reed Street. It should be noted that there were revised materials that were submitted, I believe. Yesterday's.
There was on the eighth.
On the on the. That we're not able to be reviewed and incorporated into the staff. Report.
So with with that, do we wait for staff report and? Push push this to a date certain to review it with the staff report and any new new information?
And. That that is certainly.
I would concur with that.
Okay. Without holding the public hearing, the next available date would be the sixth of September. To continue that item too.
Okay. Go ahead, Derek.
So yeah, we'll move that to a date certain of September sixth.
A second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. For those that are online, if there's anybody that had wished to testify on that matter and for the applicant. We will be back here at three o'clock on September sixth to review that. Item in a public hearing format. All right, the next item on the agenda is a code amendment. Public hearing for small cells for adding that to title eight. And. Let me see if anybody from. Well, it's looking like the legal department is not here yet, or maybe.
I'm covering for the legal department today.
You are. Well, hello, Spencer. Hi.
Hello.
I mean, in person then Spencer, would you be willing to give a staff report?
Um, actually, I was just charged with taking notes on the discussion today. I wasn't provided any other. Anything else to discuss?
And. Well, is there any member of the public that wishes to testify on this matter? All right. Harry and none, is there? Fans, a staff report and public testimony, is there any discussion on this item?
Just to be clear, this is the. This is something that we've gone over a number of times, but it was a number of months ago. Is that is that correct? This is the. Final iteration of that process.
And yes, it's the final iteration is actually what you've seen in the past or the design review standards. And I don't believe that the master license agreement came through this committee. But every small cell would be required to adhere to the. Design standards that have been adopted. And reviewed by this committee as well as interim master license agreement. And and then this is formalizing it as a use. And I I actually did have a question on the definition of the small cells. And and I don't know if Spencer is able to answer them. No. My so in looking at the the definition of small cell. It looks as though the the definition was taken directly from the FCC language. However, it includes language such as. Not. Creating radioactive frequencies, etc. And as that's in the definition, I was concerned that staff may not know. How to apply what the definition is, and that's more of a prescriptive. And so perhaps that some of the definition. Should be. Reclassified to state. Oh, what it is, and then the prescriptive nature be within the standards. So the standard would be that it would need to not emit radioactive frequencies beyond what the FCC allows.
And and. What's the? Is that is that something that you'd be comfortable if we? Conditioned in that definition based on? Staff's response and approve it with that condition, or would you suggest we? Continue this to a date certain?
And while there is a member of the the cellular community that's here and has indicated that he'd be willing. To testify and he may have. Some plots on that matter as well, if we want to go back to the public testimony. Suspend the discussion and go real. Open public testimony.
Sure.
Right, yeah.
All right, so Jason Berdysko, Verizon Wireless, one, two, eight, seven, seven, West McMillan Road, Boise, Idaho. Yeah, so I wasn't necessarily planning to test I per se, but I at least wanted to make myself present for. You know, comments, questions, things like that. So, you know. Thornborough, I would I would agree with you on that that definition because. That first portion where you that defines a small cell is out of the FCC order, so you got a federal law. That that I guess the extra portion of of radio frequencies isn't. However, it is governed by the FCC and. As Verizon and and any carrier would have to adhere in order to keep our FCC licenses, we'd have to adhere to. You know, all of those, you know, applicable laws within them, so. We have to adhere, you know, all of Verizon's small cells go through a strict, very strict regulatory process. And so we would have to, you know, adhere to those standards, otherwise we would lose our licenses, so. That's kind of that portion is covered under the federal law, so just wanted to let you know that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's any other questions, I'll just kind of stand right here for a second.
Does the committee have any other questions that might be able to be answered?
I do not.
All right, thank you very much. And I will go ahead and name no further public testimony, close the public testimony again. Reopen it for discussion.
Yeah, I don't I don't have any specific comments on this.
I I don't either.
So can are you comfortable, Jenna, with? Making a condition that you? That you kind of solidify that definition? At staff level?
And I I know that Spencer is just here taking notes, but perhaps I might ask Spencer if he would be comfortable. Representing from the legal department that that's something that could be looked at? Or perhaps not?
I'm I'm sorry, exactly what was you hoping to have looked at?
At the the definition. We have the city attorney that has just joined us.
Sit there so they can see me or ready will be.
Everybody can see you right you you're visible right now.
You can just sit down. The microphones are all working.
Everybody, Charles Watt, City Attorney. Working at sixty or one five Glenwood Garden City, Idaho. The reason for this code amendment is for small cells, one of our colleagues from Verizon is present. And so what this is is currently our code talks about. A large cells or macros, the big cell towers. The technology now is such that we're talking about small cells, so they're not as tall, they're not as big. They have different requirements, they have different dimensions, so on and so forth, and so we just need to cut out. A portion of our code, so the industry can come into Garden City. With the new five G technology, which is a small cell. With that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Waddams. We were discussing. The definition of small cell and do recognize that it's directly from the FCC. Regulations, however, there are items that appear to be prescriptive in nature, such as radio frequency. And my question was. Perhaps that is a prescriptive nature rather than a definition, whether or not they meet those standards. And then perhaps would be better located saying. The in the eight to see whatever the section is. Where the prescriptive standards are that they meet the prescriptive standards set forth by the FCC.
Well, staff would be legal department would be happy to look at that, that definition is right from the FCC. It's a lengthy definition that you really have to stare at for some time to even understand what it's saying. But we did change the definition from. Something that was not the FCC definition to the FCC definition. I thought and I told my legal assistant that was working on this that we should just use the federal definition, just to clarify any ambiguities. I do know that I don't know if Jason with Verizon has any comments along that line.
He has provided those.
He has provided and and we usually I agree with Jason, so if that's what Jason says, then we'll take a hard look at it, yep.
Great. Thank you.
And with that, I stand for any further questions.
Any further questions, Mr. Waddams?
This is just to just to summarize, this is basically a cut and paste job from Boise Municipal Code. We simplified it, we streamlined it, but it. We did not recreate the wheel, we just took that from another jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't I don't have any specific questions. And so does that with? With the the city attorney summary, Jenna? Does that need a? Condition still? To be to be looked at and kind of redefined?
And if you would like that to be a recommendation to look at that and perhaps. Read a look at the definition as it goes forward, then yes, that would need to be incorporated in the recommendation as a condition.
And I should sorry to interrupt, but to do the committee members, are they aware generally of the MLA and the design review standards? Okay, so there so commission committee members, there are three pieces. There's the master license agreement and that's been approved. There's the design review standards and those have been approved, and this is the final step, which is the code amendment.
I would, I guess I'm. I'm fine with it the way it's written. Right here, but. If. That definition needs to be looked at. I just feel the consistency with the federal. Definition is. Probably fine in my mind.
Jenna, is there any other question?
And. We're we're a little bit out of order. But. There is a question that's being requested. As public testimony, we can reopen the public testimony.
So Mrs. Thornborough, I just wanted to ask in regards to the to the question that you had, is that in regards to number six? So the language says the facilities do not result in human exposure to radio frequency radiation excess of the applicable safety standards? Is that the?
Correct. My question is in an application, how would staff know if that is?
Right, right, and then so. Mr. Waddams, is that so? I I I just don't not having the FCC definition in front of me, is that language specifically in the FCC, are you? Is it?
According to my legal intern, who I've never caught her to be wrong, I suppose she could be wrong, but I.
Okay.
She's usually spot on, I just asked her to use the FCC definition and she. And she pulled that right from their website.
Okay.
And I saw that much.
Yeah.
I did not check word for word.
And then as as part of my public testimony, because when Mrs. Thornborough asked the question, so I was saying like, you. Yeah, as for any wireless carriers, specifically speaking of Verizon, we go through a strict regulatory process. So we'd have to adhere to all FCC, you know, laws in in order to keep our licenses. And so that that's just kind of naturally built into that, and so I just wasn't sure, I like I don't remember that language being in there, but. I so I think the the question is, is like, can we move forward? To planning and zoning and city council with legal just reviewing that one aspect of of the definition is. Is that fair to say? Okay, all right.
And that would be my recommendation too, that a recommendation that we just. The committee would be so inclined to recommendation that we follow the FCC definition, whatever that looks like, and we keep this going in front of planning and so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
That that sounded like a motion we should have just seconded. But I will I will move to approve CPA FY two thousand and twenty-two. Zero zero one zero. As written. With the with the guidance that was just directed to. Clarify that FCC definition.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is a pre-application discussion for designer duty fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, number sixteen. Hannah Ball is requesting a live work great next choose development located at two oh nine, two thirteen and two fifteen or thirty fourth street. And as these are preapplications, we won't even need to semi loosely. Robert's rules as we. Just kind of. Somewhat did. And and we can open this up for discussion. Miss Ball, are you available?
Thank you, Jenna, and thank you, Design Review Committee. I'll give just a a small. Comments on the project theories overall, and most of this detail specifically are in your packets. As well as Jeff Hatch is available for comments as well as a few other members of our team, if you guys want to. Talk measurement specifics, but I'll just kind of go with my my presentation. So this is a small scale development that creates small living and working spaces within a small footprint. The scope of the project is two projects. That includes four total lots. So what we did specifically was looked at how the pedestrians currently interact. In this area. And how we hope that they'll be meandering around the community as Casino Beach is developed. We saw kind of pedestrians wanting to move around the street in a curious manner. And hopefully, this project will encourage pedestrians to go towards Chindon. So we've created some little pathways again to take the pedestrian from the green belt and meander them up to Chindon. We believe that this project creates improved pedestrian connectivity in this real Mitchell Live Work Create District. And makes a positive impact, low impact. Pedestrian focused and pedestrian scale development. We believe this project meets the goals of the comprehensive plan and Garden City's code, so happy to. Hear some thoughts from design review and and staff.
Great. Any thoughts? By a either committee member? I I did have a note related to the pavers. And how they would interact with the trees. I I would suggest checking with ACHD to make sure that the the trees could be placed where they are. If the pavers are intended to provide drainage. In the street. And I suspect that there may be the trees may be precluded from being placed where they're shown on the plans. Right now, due to their policies. Related to pavement.
Thank you for that, Jenna, and what we were thinking as far as the street design too, since Casino Beach is designed that. Car street. Segment to mimic those findings from ACHD, would you think that that's still? Kind of the model?
And I would I would suggest. Hopefully, prior to the formal public hearing. To try to get your plans in front of ACHD Development Services. To make sure that that could could be. Just looking at it, my hunch is there may be some hiccups.
Okay.
Think for ACHD. Staff, is there anything that you think should be highlighted from your staff report?
And well, in conversation with Jeff Hatch yesterday, the architect on the program or not for project. And it. Came up that the the project is two different structures, four different lots, like Hannah was saying, but it's also. Two different design review applications. Potentially. And. It it could be processed as one design review application as it has been already. But there's just a little bit of misunderstanding there in the processing of the application. Either way, it would still need to be two different building permits at the end of the day, because this is two different. Structures. But in saying that, if. It's two different applications, then I would need to change my staff report and review each application separately under the live work create overlay. Which would impact different requirements such as like on-street parking. The commercial parking that gets triggered through the square footage requirements of the site. Anything like that. So I would say that that needs to be. At least cleared up, it doesn't have to be cleared up today, but at least before the formal hearing commences. And. And then. Sorry, Jason, go ahead.
Hannah, can we ask just real quick, because I don't think it matters to us whether it's one application or two. I mean, obviously, they were designed. To be. You know, complimentary. So we submitted for two pre-apps, but. You know, like I said, the buildings themselves have the same footprint type and and layout and design, which is why we thought maybe that's why you combined them. Into one on the application materials. I think our bigger question was, like I said, I think we know that we would probably have to have two building permits, because it's two different buildings anyway. So is there any real reason why they shouldn't be reviewed together? I mean, for us, it'll save us money from having to submit two applications.
As of right now, I can't think of any reason why you should have two separate applications, especially since they're so interdependent of one another. As far as I got the planning review side.
Yeah, I mean, that's our take too, I mean, we just we just weren't sure because. You know, they're they're really so in the end, there are four properties right now, but in the in the final phase of this, there will actually be two properties. So each building will be on a property by itself. And so we weren't sure if the city had any. Desire to have this submitted separately, even though I think they probably should be reviewed together, or at least if they are submitted separately, like reviewed back to back.
Right, yeah, like.
Yeah, right, I mean, it only makes sense. So is it all right if we then submit one application for this?
Yeah.
Okay, I I we just wanted to make sure, like I said, we weren't really sure. So we just were going with.
Yeah, it's okay if it's one application right now, even if you intend to kind of split it up later on. You'll still need to do the lot consolidations because of construction over those current lot line. Lot lines.
Yeah, and so I think the plan is where there's construction over the lot lines, we're going to consolidate those lots, but then the two separate buildings will not actually be consolidated on the same lot, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I I might suggest since you have four lots and you have. Interdependent areas such as the the walkway between that when you're doing the lot line adjustment to consider. Perhaps utilizing the lot lines that you have to create a common lot that could be commonly owned. As we do subdivisions, we recommend instead of having easements, because those can. Get complicated.
Sure.
That that the common ownership tends to be a better direction.
Well, and Jenna, just so you know, because we have two different owners for the buildings. I think we've designed it so that even if the second building wasn't built, that there would still be walkway room. That which is why the buildings are set back ten feet from the property line instead of five. As it could have been, so we kind of designed in case the other building wasn't built, but I think it's our intent that they would both get built. So I don't know that we maybe think that they want to have that as a common. Walking space, in other words, I think there's still room to walk with sidewalks, even if both buildings aren't. Aren't built and only one is built. If that makes sense.
Jenna, just to make sure I understand that comment more thoroughly. When you say common lot, even if we're looking at, do these parcels have two lots? And so if we do one for the building and one for the localized common area, you're saying that that would be a little bit cleaner consolidation?
And yes, I am, so if you have the the I'd say two lots, so right now you have the four lots, the four properties. And the intent is to create two building lots. The areas that are. Utilized by both of those. Properties like the walkway, perhaps you could use one of the the lots, because you have four lots to work with. As the potential to have a a common ownership lot versus only having two lots with easements. For the adjacent properties.
Okay. Along those lines, is that something that we would? Be able to just have as a condition of approval, or would we need to clarify that through our application here?
That would be a separate application through the lot line adjustment, property consolidation application, that's a staff level. Review that goes through the planning and engineering review process.
Thank you.
And and Jenna, real quick, just to add to that, so. There were really maybe only two common areas that the lots, I think, proposed to share, which is that walkway down the middle between them. And then the alleyway in the back, so. There already is an easement in place for the alleyway. And like I said, I'm not sure that we want to have a. Permanent easement in the other. Location. You know, maybe after after the built and or it looks like it's got building permits, we would, but. At least initially, I don't think we would want to have a condition that would require an easement or a separate lot there for those. For that walkway between them. At least initially, I don't think we would want to have a condition that would require an easement or a separate lot there for those, for that walkway between them.
Only ever is. Walkway, even though it says vehicle, vehicle rated, you have sculptures kind of along it. So. A vehicle's not going to go down that middle, correct?
Yeah, I mean, our, our intent is that it's, it will be designed in case there was some emergency need to pull vehicles through there. But our intent is not to have vehicles drive through there.
And where's, where's garbage pickup?
So we've, we've got a couple of options. So, and we're really okay with whatever the city is, is looking at. I mean, obviously there's not. We only have 16 units here. And so we could individually can those units. The other option is to do like a shared trash disposal. So we believe. Yeah, commercial. And so we believe at least that we'll, we could create a shared agreement. Where we have Republic Services pick it up in the back. But we have either of those as an option. I think our preference would be to have a commercial dumpster. We just have to work with Republic to make sure they can pick that up. So we've got two location possibilities for it. So one is. Closer in where we think Republic could definitely get it because of the distances that they'll drive in. But we're looking at maybe using that 10 foot and having this a big enough turnaround space for them to back into that. For the turnaround. So we'll just have to see how, how that kind of plays out.
Which, Jason, which 10 foot are you talking about? Just the, the section in between, the walking area?
Yeah, the walking area. In other words, we can have almost like a little hammerhead there. Move those sculptures and give them a hammerhead to actually back into and turn.
So they come in the alley. And hammerhead, hammerhead down the walkway, but where's the dumpster and dumpster enclosure itself?
Oh, so we would actually, so the dumpster that we would use would be a shared dumpster that's on the site from the Park 33 project.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
So instead of having multiple dumpsters back there, we would just share that dumpster that's already going to exist on the corner there. I think the problem was when we talked to Republic Services, they maybe only want to go in like 75 feet unless there's a turnaround for them. So during our pre-pre app, we discussed maybe creating a little hammerhead for them to turn around there and they. They seem to be okay with that idea. But we also have the possibility of. Putting that dump, putting a dumpster further up the, the alleyway there.
And orientation wise, that dumpster is. Top the right corner of this project, right?
From, let me see what they draw.
It's on the, it's on the fourth lot away from Carr Street.
Yep. So right now, the, well, and yeah, I think, I think the other proposed location would be right behind the very first lot from Carr Street. Because one of our property owners on this one also owns that other property right across from the first one. So we would have a dumpster location that's just about 30 feet in.
Okay.
Off the other side of the alley. So like I said, I think dumpster is our preference. We'll just have to work with Republic to allow us to do that.
And then we of course would need to see where that is and how that's interacting with the other site.
Sure.
And then what of, it looks like the property line is the edge of alley. So what about landscape buffer along there?
Along which side?
The, what it would be east side of the alley.
So I think what we've got is that everybody who's there actually wants to use the alley for parking access. So obviously we don't want a landscape where people are driving through.
So all four lots to plan north.
Yeah.
Would be using that alley and they would have their own. Landscape buff, buffer within their development in essence. And then have. And then have curb cuts in essence off the, off the alley.
Yeah, in essence. I mean, I think the, the trick is that everybody wants to actually have access. And right now they do have access. So the only. Only property that. The only properties that aren't going to have access to that alley are the ones that are past where the alley dead ends right now. So we're still in talks with those owners to see if they would like to continue the alley through, obviously. But everybody along the alley actually wants the alley to exist for access. So, so we don't, like I said, you don't want a buffer in between their access to the alley because then they would be driving over landscaping or.
Right, right. And, and, and I don't know how that works ultimately with. With staff's review and our approval and planning and zoning and all of that, but I know we've seen. I know we've seen the. Park 33 development with that alley access. So it makes sense that that's not. Interrupting or in the way, but I think we would need to see something that kind of convinced us that. The two that are on the, on the car street side. That those wouldn't be requiring a landscape buffer. For the, you just stated, just some sort of, some sort of documentation that said like, no, we want this alley. We don't want a landscape buffer.
Well, and yeah, and we can get that. I mean, really the other property owner is part of this project, which is Jerry Alberg. And, and so his property exists right there too. So obviously he wants to use the alley for access to that. And the only other property there is Cyril's place. And they also requested access off the alley. So, so if, I mean, I think, I guess Cyril's would be the only one we would maybe need to, if you want us, we can get a letter confirming as much. Before our next hearing. But yeah, so they were actually excited that they might have a way to access the back of the property and it might give them. A little more flexibility to do something different. But they also already are screened. I mean, just. As a note, they're already screened with landscaping and a fence there. Along the back property line.
Yep. And then, and then big picture, this is 16 live work units and 16. Enclosed garages. The main floor looks like the studio spaces, workspaces, commercial spaces. And then above are the. Live units. That's it in a nutshell, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. With. Open active courtyards.
And, and both or just the one on the corner?
Both.
Okay.
And maybe to clarify, because this was in the staff report, so we can make sure this is clarified. Like I said, we actually submitted it as two different. Applications and our, our write-ups were for each one individually. And even though they're not in the application, they were slightly different. But each courtyard is 2,800 square feet. So those are pretty large courtyards. For the site. So we do want to make sure that's also all of the units are basically the same size. They're all 995 square feet. And they're all two bedroom units. So I know the staff report wasn't sure that's what it was. I think the staff report was also questioning whether we had enough open space. And I think just the 2,800 square foot courtyards were. Basically more than four times the amount of open space required. And so we didn't do the calculation of all the balconies and we actually have some balcony space on the rooftops also. But because it was so far in excess of the requirement, we just didn't. We didn't calculate it.
And the, and those courtyards are. Open to the public in essence, as they come and go from these commercial spaces.
I mean, I think that, that, that the least intent of the design is that they could be.
That's what, that's what we envision now is like a, you know, courtyards closed when the last business closes. So if that's 10pm in the district, it's like the courtyards are essentially public sitting spaces.
Yeah, I, I was just looking and kind of. The, the one in the corner, you know, getting into that courtyard seems like a public. It seems like a public entry because it's very much on the corner, but then the interior one. The kind of going into the courtyard looks like it's more, it's a lot more internal. Up the, up the pathway. So just maybe, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think we've probably flipped that, Derek. So it's actually, I think that something happened in our plans along the way and that got flipped backwards.
Okay. And that's what, that was what I was thinking is it might be more, you know, it might be more engaging if that was flipped and then that.
Yeah.
Kind of open corridor was closer to the street.
Somewhere in design that actually got flipped around and we've actually since flipped it back in our latest plans. It just isn't.
Okay.
Isn't shown here. Obviously we didn't want to have a late submittal or something. So yeah, you're right. It, the other one actually has the entryway in the same location as the. The one on the corner of Carr and 34th Street.
So where is the? I guess the. Entrance to the units above. To the living units and, and where is their primary entry?
So that, I think there's two primary entries. There's stairways that go up to the second story and those primary entries are on the second story itself.
So it looks like the. Interior courtyard pathway, like balcony is that main hallway for each unit? Is that correct?
On the, on the second story, Hannah, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
I, I guess I, you know, one of the things we're always looking at for these. Is that really highly identifiable, identifiable entry point that here's the. Here's the main access point to get up where all of these. Units, the residential component feeds from. And is accessed from. And right now, when I, when I kind of am looking at the renderings and such, I don't see that. So. Just, I guess, think about that.
So Brett. So let me make sure I'm getting what you're saying. So obviously because there's this public space that could be public, I mean, it doesn't have to be. I mean. Again, as, as we look at it, those could, it could be closed off workspaces and doesn't have to be public, but I think. Are you saying you want some sort of highlight to the stairs that would go up to the residential units, even, even though maybe there are. People walking around and we may not want people to move up through those stairwells?
Are the, are these still residential units?
Well, the residential units are all.
That, that's correct. And so the, the, there is going to be a main, the main connectivity. Then from those residential. Component. That does need to have its connection to, to the street. And. You know, right now, just a stair, not knowing, I mean. Is this stair accessing the, the residences up there? Is this, I mean, if somebody's coming there not to. Interface with the commercial, but coming there to interface with the residential component. It needs to be, in my mind, it needs to be readily identifiable, just like any other. Mixed use project or, or apartment complex or any, I mean, to have that. This is the entry component. That is easily identifiable from the street. To access those, those units. I mean, it, it, it still needs to have that component. Right now, it. You know, as I'm looking at it, everything's about these commercial spaces, but. There is a distinction between the, these commercial spaces and the residential. Even though they could be, you know, they live, work and the people that are living here are having these commercial spaces. They're still, still two. Somewhat separate.
Sure.
Interfaces.
Yeah, and I think that's our intent is that they would be somewhat separate because we may not want, like, I think the idea is that. The stairs go up to the balconies and those balconies access all the residential units. So the balconies that you see from the outside on the elevations, all access, have access to the residential units. And I think the idea is that. You really don't want people from the commercial stuff walking up and wandering around in the residential spaces.
I, I, I get that. I think that you can probably do that with a buzz man. Some kind of secure access, you know, control. But if somebody's there to specifically go up there. For the residential piece, going to visit their friend or what have you or whatnot. Or making a delivery to go drop something off at somebody's residence. It needs to be identifiable.
Gotcha.
Where that, where that main entry point is. It's something that we look at with all these types of projects is like, okay, you got commercial uses. You got a bunch of people living up, up top. Where is that main access entry point? And if it's one of these stairways. Which it, it could be a stairway, it just needs to read a little more. Like this is the entry to the residential units up here.
Gotcha. So maybe we'll do like. The awning bump out and then, you know, better defined landscape and then numbering systems and. You know, just again, really mess with that. Visuals. To create a clearly, like, here's the entry, you know, and then just say, you know.
And it looks like you got two, right? You got.
Yeah.
Two exits from those upper levels, which you need to have. So you got two stairways. Neither of them feeds into the courtyard, which kind of keeps that kind of a separate. Component separately controlled, I guess, is what you're, what you're looking for. I would say. The. The one, the one building, I guess it's gonna, I'm gonna call, let's see, it's building A. That one's a little bit more difficult to identify. The entry point, it's not feeding directly onto the street. So it's, it's coming off of that main kind of pedestrian access spine. So you know, maybe there's a way that you. That you address that one through that central access spine that that really. Is where grabs you visually and. You know, I don't know, maybe both of the, the main entrances come off of that spine. And you really highlight that as, as part of how you can access the units from, you know, from that location. One way or another, it just, I, I'm going to be looking, I guess, looking for that to be resolved.
So Brett, let me make sure we understand. So like where those stairway entrances are, you kind of want that to look more like an entryway.
Somehow it just needs to read visually like, so people know that, oh, here's the entrance. To get me up to the residential units.
Mission to the break, just kind of elaborate a little bit. You know, if we make a, a more deliberate visual connection to the stairway, to the mailboxes. So you can see that you have a residential component there that people are going to circulate. You can get buzzed and, and it's very obvious. This is not the same feel as the commercial details. That's what essentially you want us to start to.
Perfect. Yeah. I, I mean, I think, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I agree. I always look at like. How many doors is FedEx going to knock on before they find that apartment, right?
Yeah.
I'll say, there's something else that I was looking at. Oh, landscaping along. Plan right. Towards Chindon, landscaping along that perimeter. Should be developed somehow.
Yeah. So we've been talking with the neighbor, Derek. You know, they're looking at doing some sort of development also. So we've, we've, one, we tried to talk them into maybe being part of what we're doing here. But they just weren't quite ready to do that. So they're, they're really looking at having some sort of restaurant over there, which is why they want access down the alley. So we just haven't figured out whether we want to. You know, throw up a fence there or not, but we're, we're happy to put whatever landscaping you guys want to require. In the meantime, if they haven't already come through with the development at the time that this is approved. Can we talk about the parking?
Yeah, I actually wanted to talk about that a little bit. I noticed that I had said that the total. Parking or the total square footage for the commercial space was. 3,960 square feet, but I think that's just for one structure. So it's actually doubled. So about 7,920 square feet of. Workspace technically for both of the structures. So that would change the requirements of the parking. So if you take 7,920 square feet. So if you take seven thousand nine hundred twenty square feet. Divide it by the one thousand five hundred, you get five spaces that are required. So for the commercial and the way we've. Processed live work create applications in the past is that. The residential aspect needs to be onsite as well as the commercial parking spaces need to be onsite. And. The application only provides for the residential parking onsite. And despite there being nine on-street parking spaces. Because they're parallel, only one of those parking spaces is allowed to count towards that minimum parking requirement. So essentially, there needs to be. Four more parking spaces onsite between the two. Structures.
So Hannah, um I guess our big question is, just since we've already had a lawsuit over the exact same thing and the judge ruled. That we did in fact meet the parking because none of the spaces were five hundred square feet or greater. That we didn't have to park those.
And these are less than five hundred, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, each base is less than five hundred.
I I suspect um on the the judgment order, um as this goes through, I suspect that the legal department will weigh in. On what they interpret the judgment order was saying, one way or another.
Yep.
The the square footage was part of the vagueness, or if it was just the planning and zoning commission's ability determine. And so as we do move forward.
Sure.
We'll weigh in on this application.
I mean, I guess we just wanted to make sure that that you're aware that. The ruling was that because we didn't have spaces over five hundred, we didn't need those extra parking spaces and that we met the parking requirements with just the residential. Which is why that project is approved now.
And and. This is being submitted as a live work, just for clarity to state it. And it is that code overlay is still. In existence, so that's, we're reviewing it as if. All the things we've heard in the last six months, we, we haven't heard.
Sure. I mean, I think that. E- e- even if you look at the proposal for the changes to city code for the live work. Um that are, that's now being repealed. I think you'll see that the change. That would have allowed them to do a cumulative basis for the total number of workspaces was part of that code change. So I do believe the legal team is gonna look at that and go. Yeah, it's not cumulative, uh because then there wouldn't really be a really an encouraging piece to require small spaces. If it all accumulates, then why would you have small spaces that get a benefit of not having to be parked? So we just want to make that. A note, so maybe that it can be reviewed before the uh. The actual application is submitted.
Um possibly, should we submit a? I always want to call it a waiver to parking standards, but that's not the actual term Jenna uses. And I always ask if there's an application, what is that form? Uh modifications, meaning we provided more bike racks. Rideshare, blah, 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 additional items for pedestrian connectivity.
Well, this isn't a P U D, so I don't think that's.
Oh, gotcha.
Well, you still utilize the eight four D alternatives to onsite parking standards. You would just need to submit some kind of like narrative.
Perfect.
Demonstrating you have extra bike parking, you have public transportation, they list it out or we list it out.
Gotcha. And then just we'll cite that in a letter. That's helpful.
And then there's, there's zero room. The, the way the alley is drawn is the alley minimums, right? There's zero room for kind of parallel parking in the alley.
So I think we've got, well, no, we've got a five foot setback from the building to the alley. On the backside, so it's really.
Right.
It looks tight, but there's actually a five foot space, same thing, so that there's actually a walkway around. So I. I think in our mind, we wanted to be able to turn that corner. And continue around the back.
And that's where, that's where people are pulling in and out of their, of their garages.
Yeah, yeah. So we've got some space back there. But it's just like five feet, I think. If even that, maybe four feet.
Depending upon what happens to the the adjacent. Development to the south, there may be an opportunity to, you know, if if they do a similar alleyway design uh to ours. And that would enable parallel parking on both sides of that alley in the future. So it is wide enough to accommodate. Some suggestions. For that future density.
Yeah, or maybe that, if that is a walkway in front of all those garage doors, maybe. And and the. Projects to the east are are developing and using the alley, maybe that five foot shifts. To the west and then the, you know, kind of the pedestrian corridor is shared more than.
When I think Derek, you know, we had a pre-pre app discussion, um which was with fire. And so this alley is not being utilized for fire. So it's not a secondary access and right now all the proposed buildings along it don't need secondary access. And so it is possible that if the alley got continued through, which is I think what our hope is, is that it could be one-way traffic. Which would then create more parking. If we wanted to have those created, but but again, it's gonna be. Kind of beyond this because we're waiting on neighbors to figure out what development they're gonna do, but. We do believe our neighbor to the south of us. Is planning to develop, it's just their timelines are slower.
If it, then they will come. Just put the, put, put the alley in and they'll be like, this is really handy. Now I want to.
Well, we know they need the access just because of the shape and design of the lots. So we know it's just a matter of time before they go, uh and we really wanted to get them in on kind of working out the deal before, but. You know, it was just with the number of parties that were already working on the easement for the alley. It was just easier to do it without them because they weren't quite sure what they wanted to do and and to get the easement in place and then continue to move forward with some projects instead of trying to. Uh wait for people who you're not quite sure when they're ready to go.
And is the entire block such that you don't need to? Pull back out to thirty fourth street, you can just go car to clay?
So we don't think so right now. So right now, there's still one property at the end that wouldn't allow us to come out on clay. Um, you know, so really, it it kind of. It's possible that this could get turned out to thirty third or out to thirty fourth. Um and I think both of those possibilities currently exist. Uh I think clay is actually the. One that will only exists at sometime in the future that's maybe more unpredictable when that property it would actually sell. You know, now with property values the way they are. That may be only a matter of time, but uh again, maybe out of our control right now.
Yeah, that, yeah, that was just curious. I don't think it, it hinges anything on this, just curious.
Can we, can we clarify some tree stuff for the staff? I think there was like an issue, maybe we were claiming we had a lot more trees than we showed. Uh so I think if I'm correct, we have maybe twelve class two trees. Uh on our latest proposal, I don't know on this one what it was, but I think maybe there was some. Discrepancy somewhere on the thing that said we had more. Is that correct, Hannah?
Uh well, so I was looking at the landscape plans and. I forget which structure it was for, but it looked like. Uh and I'm looking through the material right now too.
Okay.
And there's like, there's eighteen columnar Norway maple trees proposed. And I couldn't tell exactly where that was being proposed because it's. I mean, it really only looks like you have the street trees and those bulb outs along car and thirty fourth and then some of the smaller. Trees there next to the on-street parking.
Okay.
So it's, it just looks like the numbers. Under the plant schedule were a lot higher than what it actually was depicted on the.
Yeah, and we, we've, we've talked to the landscaping guys and I think they're gonna get those numbers. They're gonna check everything and correct it for the final version. So that it hopefully everything actually adds up. In terms of um the fence, like, so I know there's like fencing that would be required along that other property line on the south side. Is that something that can just be conditioned? I mean, is that something we need to show in our proposal?
Yeah, it can easily be conditioned. Um it would need to be code compliant and I made that comment in. The staff too, so.
Perfect.
Like a six-foot tall privacy fence or something.
Yeah, because like I said, I'm not sure what's gonna happen over there and it's possible that they're gonna want access through the alley when they do. And obviously, we're not gonna have a fence where they're trying to gain access. So there's a whole lot of unknowns. But we don't mind putting up a fence in the meantime, uh if at the time that we're. Approved.
For, for that general condition, um city approved or code approved. Fence material, does that include verbiage to say an art fence can come back through at staff level? Do we, Jenna, do you know about art fences yet or where are we at with that?
Um I, I don't think that there's anything that I can think of in code that would preclude that.
Okay.
If it comes back and it's artistic in nature, so as long as it's not skirting the line of utilizing chain link and slots to get there. Something that's a prohibited material or.
But it could staff, could staff review that?
Certainly, uh.
Okay.
Unless it becomes somehow a condition of this, this application. It may not even require a staff level review dependent on what's proposed.
Gotcha.
Um, so real quick, Hannah and Jenna, this is maybe for you, but maybe also for design review, but. Uh with the doorways being recessed three feet from the sidewalk, so obviously. Our building is set back ten feet from the property line, which from the official sidewalk is significantly set back. It's like five feet setback, but we're kind of, because we're creating these balconies and. We're really trying to get a New Orleans type feel. Um you know, we have these balconies that go out to about five feet from the property line. So I guess our question is. You know, how do we deal with the fact that we're kind of creating what appears to be sidewalks that go up to the front doors effectively? I mean, like I said.
That, that comment, I'm forgetting what section of code it's specifically under.
Yeah, it's eight four C dash four special provisions.
That the, and and it's stating that. The door has to be recessed three feet.
From the side.
Sidewalk, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I'm assuming the intent is so that the door doesn't swing open into that pedestrian travel way and knock someone out.
Sure.
And so, yes, you do have a much wider sidewalk area. I mean, essentially, it's ten feet. Like you were saying, um. And it does have that recessed appearance.
And and I might also chime in and state that it it's also covered by the structure itself at the end of the day. So to me, it doesn't necessarily read as a sidewalk, but more of a uh an interface between the public, private. Uh realm to me personally.
Yeah. And that's, that's all we wanted kind of clarity, because I mean, we can put planters there that may kind of block the areas around it. So that it doesn't look like, you know, people aren't walking right where the door would open and that sort of thing, but. Uh we just want to make sure that. Whatever the solution to that is, is that that it could be conditioned in, uh like I said, cause. I think we do want this to feel like a New Orleans type feel and. You know, that kind of means that we have what appears to be basically a gigantic sidewalk that goes almost to the building. So it's, it's kind of, even though we've recessed the things, the doors may open into parts of those sidewalk areas.
And why doesn't the. Covered promenade, for lack of a better word, why doesn't that become the sidewalk? And the building posts become. Closer to the street. What, what drove that design decision?
I mean, I, I think we weren't sure whether it would be allowed. Quite frankly, I mean, you know, if if somebody says to us, hey, we can have these balconies hang out within the setbacks, we would do it.
Aren't you? Yeah, what is, what is your front and side? Don't you have a zero in Cyril Mitchell?
Yeah, in theory, we can have a zero and especially because now we have, we have two projects side by side that are there. Uh but we kind of wanted to have that walkway between those two projects. So I think that's part of why that exists. It's because we kind of created balconies and walkway on the other side, but even along car and thirty fourth street, we're actually setting the balconies back five feet. And then setting the building back ten feet. Um because of the height of the building, the, the top floor would have had to have been set back ten feet anyway. You know, so, so again, I think if, if the city wants to comment, like I said, we don't, we would love to pull those balconies out at least a couple more feet. Uh into the setback, but. There's been some issues about what is a building and whether it can be in the setbacks.
Yeah, I think.
Considerations, this is a fairly highly pedestrian accessible space that we're designing. We have the circulation of what's anticipated, a lot of different pedestrian access, be it by bike, by foot. Um or other multimodal means. And so having this more multimodal pathway. Or you have the retail circulation covered. And functional to that commercial space and and still maintaining that high circulation of pedestrian activity. Was, was what we wanted to create to, to create that engagement, but also. You know, meet the intent of, of, you know, those covered entryways.
So I, I will say, I think it's a really cool idea. I like it. Um you know, it reminds me of like West Palm, Florida. That spent a whole lot of money to get there. Um but I think we'd really need to look at code to see. How to do that. And one of the, not even the development code with the setbacks, but also. Um it might bring into question what building code would do because you're over the top of your property line. And so I think there are a lot of questions there that I don't know that we're prepared to answer right now.
Well, so, so Jenna, uh so the balconies aren't gonna be over the property line. Like I said, the balcony right now, the furthest extent of it is five feet from the property line. So I guess our question is, could they be two feet from the property line?
I, I'm just going from memory, but. Something in my memory says that balconies and cornices and canopies that don't increase the square footage of the building. Can encroach X amount. And I think it's three feet just off the. Off the top of my head, because I remember a project that had a five-foot setback. And three-foot encroachment in essence with a, with a balcony. So that's just going from memory. I have to search some keywords to find that, but.
Oh, sorry, it'd be under eight two B. Uh eight two B three form standards. F setbacks and then. Um so F three A. Encroachments allowed in any setback, open structures, canopies, balconies, platforms, covered patios, cornices, eaves and other projections. Which do not increase the volume of space enclosed by the building and do not project into any required setback by more than two feet.
Yeah, so I had it the opposite. It can encroach two.
Gotcha.
Into a five, which then leaves three if we're.
So in, so I, I guess what we're saying, so I, I mean, this is a little tricky because we have. Beams that come down to support those balconies, but are we saying that? We could take the balcony and make it two feet bigger into the setback and. With the poles now being kind of probably right at the edge of what I think officially would be the sidewalk. The officials.
Well, the, the columns would, um they would have to meet the.
Well, the the columns would, um, they would have to meet the setback. They wouldn't be able to to encroach. Because that's a part of your building foundation. So those those have to maintain in the setback.
So the supports for the balconies would now have to be somehow back off of the edge of the balcony?
They they would be back and the balcony could could can a lever over and encroach it.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
And and even with the posts in the sidewalks, I would say we should still keep that travel pathway at least five feet wide.
Mm hmm.
But I think I think based on at least the design we submitted. Right now, our proposed sidewalk, not including the part of the sidewalk under the balcony, is like seven feet maybe.
So, uh, Jason, for just for clarification of of what does meet code. If you remember our concept rendering balcony on the third floor is actually extending out. At at a forty five approach to the setbacks. And so that. Um, i- is allowed because it's not, the columns themselves are not touching uh, outside of the setback. But we are utilizing that code in this design already.
Sure, sure, sure. I guess I was just asking if we could get those columns moved out. But that was the real gist of it.
I I don't read that. I don't read that the same way and, um. And I could be wrong, but. What we're talking about is an open structure. It is a balcony. It is a covered patio. Why? I mean, the the posts that support that are just suppo- supporting an open structure, a canopy, a balcony. So why does that? I don't read that. The structure of those things have to comply with the setback, but the thing itself does not. It because it's not enclosing additional space of the building. It's an open structure. So I read it that a column can have a two foot encroachment, but. I could be missing something.
Uh, Jenna, Hannah, is there a way we could kind of get a? Looks like we got a split vote here in interpretation at the moment.
Well, we even are discussing another realm of it, um. To not to further complicate things, but because you're using the overlay. For the setbacks, then can you go to the base zoning district for the setback relief? And so I think there's a lot that we're gonna have to sit down and really uh, think through to to make sure that we don't misguide. Um, anything.
And and base takes it to not more than ten feet, so that could read as zero, right? I.
From our, I guess the difference would be the P U D versus an actual true design review.
Okay.
Yeah, I see where you're getting Commissioner Heard. The last one of these we did with the zero lot line was a Q V. Which had more leniency. And so I think where where Jason's coming from is he wants to be very rigid and abiding by that designer view guidelines. We don't necessarily have the leniency that we did with a P U V.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, like I said, if if we could put those posts there, I think everybody would be happy to have the balcony two feet bigger in size. And to be out that extra two feet. I think we would just have to make sure that, you know, I think we don't want to redesign the look of what this New Orleans feel is where the post really are. The support and they aren't can levered out. Uh, generally speaking, so. So I don't know, maybe that's something the staff can update us with as we go along this process. Uh, when we've submitted application, we can kind of, if there's some adjustment we can make, we can do so.
Or could we just submit as we've designed and then design review could commission their preference or could, um. Put their preference as a. Condition of approval.
So uh, on this, I think that on a staff level, we can. Try to explore fairly quickly this, because I know you're you would need it for your next step of designs, seeing if you could. Overextend and how much you could overextend. And then if you do overextend where the post would need to be and and look at some of these. If you could use the the base zone to do that extension, um, and get back with you offline, so you know. What you need to do for the next steps.
Yep, well, and Jenna, I mean, obviously, you know, our timing here is very tight to submit this in time because the live work is being repealed. And so, I mean, is it a possibility that we can submit our application, knowing that this is something that's kind of undecided? And and that could be a staff level review later to add that two feet if it's something that's legal to do.
Um. So just to clarify, you only have a pre-app application in at this point in time?
Yes, and we because we can't submit the application until the pre-app is done here. But I would say.
I don't know that there's anything that would preclude you from submitting tomorrow. The application, um, and and if you would do that. Um, understanding that that yes, of course, the district's going away, but you would, um. You would have it in prior to that being repealed.
Well, and I guess that's what I'm saying is we're ready to submit the application tomorrow, which was our plan. But it obviously won't have like an extra two feet of balcony in if we find out that that's allowed. We just want to make sure, you know, we get a better product on on what we can do if it's allowed.
Yeah, I I don't know what would preclude while we look into how the code would look at it. It just might require that you amend what you submit.
Sure, and that that would be fine. That's perfect. That's kind of what we're just making sure. Um, I think I've got one more question for sure. So, um, on landscaping, and this kind of goes back to. You know, I know in the live work code, there's a landscaping section, but it doesn't really have a requirement, but, um. I think this is saying, hey, we want to make sure that five percent of the gross site areas landscaped. And so I guess a big question for us is how to count that. So we've we've obviously, because of the design of the balconies. And I don't know how many people have been in New Orleans, but you know, most, a lot of our design landscaping hangs from the balconies. Uh, internally and externally. You know, I again, we've got kind of a big water feature in the middle that will can have plantings on it. And I guess our big question was what gets to count? Um, because it's this is a more urban design, so in terms of what landscaping. Is it gonna count toward the five percent? Like, is our whole courtyard gonna get to count? Because we've got all this landscaping and water features with plants on it, or? Do we just try to count the? You know, and again, or do we even need to? Because it's not really part of the landscaping requirements for the lit work.
It needs to be seventy percent living to count. So like the water feature, for example. Probably would be excluded.
Okay, unless we planted water lilies across.
I guess.
Coy.
Then I get, I guess that's the, you know, in our mind, when we're looking at this five percent, it gets pretty complicated to calculate. Because all the balconies are basically landscaped. But vertically.
Yeah. And I mean, where are you? I guess we're are do you have this huge delta that you're trying to make up? Because it seems like the courtyards have quite a bit and.
No, I think what we we obviously designed, I think what what Jeff and our landscape people were doing was. We took some pictures of New Orleans, which if you've ever been, you see that all the balconies are planted. Uh, you know, here with with planters, but also I I think what we're not showing here is like hanging planters. Uh, so you know, in New Orleans, those hanging planters actually tend to fill the open gaps between the the support poles.
Right.
You know, and I think we were really trying to go for that look and feel. Where, you know, your balconies end up having these hanging over plants so that there's there's a lot of covering and green.
But Jason, we don't have a detriment, correct?
No, we don't have a detriment. I think it's just the question was what are, you know, the city is wanting like a calculation here. And when I asked our landscape people, they were like, we don't know how the city would even want us to calculate this.
Just maybe the courtyards and if we meet the standard, everything else like balcony is. Not right. That's a after the fact feature. As long as we meet the standard, and I believe we we can meet it.
Sure. I mean, I guess it's just how do we show that we're meeting?
Sure, calculate it.
Do I calculate the whole area of this water feature? If there's gonna be water lilies in it and plants?
Oh, sure, sure.
I mean, in other words, a lot of this area is landscaping. I mean, we have a whole lot of open space here. We have planters that are hanging down and literally covering large portions of the building. I think we have planters. Uh, along the walls of the back of the building too.
I thi- I I think you have to look at it from what's permanent and what's not too.
Okay.
Are those are those uh, steel integrated planters that are part of the, you know? Uh, permanent to where they're not just something that if, you know, one year they don't grow right, they pull them off and they never go back on. And oh, this year, we don't want to hang a bunch of planters. It's too expensive. Uh, there's there's all those issues. So I I just think that if they're permanent in nature, like all down that walking path with those custom. Uh, planners with this built in seats. I mean, th- those are permanent elements. Those count as landscaping. I I at least that's the way I would look at it.
Yep, and I think you got to consider the climate too, because it's it's New Orleans looking, but and we can re- render it like that. But at the end of the day, I've yet to see a lush environment in the desert that we live in.
Sure. So, um, Brett, just to kind of go back to your comment, I mean. Are we suggesting that as long as we say these are permanent, then it's good?
I think it's maybe that's gonna be how. Yeah, I guess, how are they constructed?
Okay, gotcha.
I mean.
Yeah, the rendering looks like if a upstairs tenant got tired of watering their landscaping. Then they just take it inside or kick it off the edge and never worry about it again. But if it's a part of the building, if it's a part of the irrigation system and it's being watered regularly. And or tended by the, you know, community. Which would be ideal, right? It's one cohesive landscape element that someone's taking care of that. Wants it to look good.
Just a just curious question that I they have as I'm I'm looking at this, so the. The walkway on the outside and then the walkway on the inner courtyard, those are just. Walkways per se. I mean, they're not, they're not like private patios. They're not. You know, I mean, you don't you don't envision there being, um. Them being used like that. Now, I I haven't been in New Orleans, so I I don't know if people on those walkways surrounding, you know, they put their little. Uh, table and chairs out there and and it's like one big party wrapping around the building and I I I don't know. Was it, I mean, what's the intent on how that's supposed to be utilized? Those those spaces, because to me, they seem like the same space. There's a walkway loop around the inside or loop around the outside.
Just curious.
Well, so Brett, I think we can kind of answer that. So we do have some common space up top. So there's actually room on the top level that can can be actually common space. And I would imagine for this little community. Um, there would be some space set up with tables and chairs and umbrellas and whatever on the very top floor of it. But I kind of also imagine, you know, the way this is, is that we've kind of got it where you can access your, you know, both sides, the inner walkway. Walkway. And I imagine that there would still be people who would bring their uh, chair right out to the walkway outside their door. And sit out there and have a cold beer or a coffee in the morning. Uh, and if somebody wanted to walk by, they would just move their legs out of the way and let them walk. So that's kind of at least my way that I kind of envision it, because again, there's, these are pretty small spaces. There's not going to be a huge number of people living here. Um, you know, so with with we with each building, I mean. You know, we've got basically two bedroom units, uh, and and basically sixteen units total, so.
And yeah, I was just curious about that because you could theoretically. Either on the back walkway, the the interior one or on the outside one, you know. Uh, break it up a little bit so people, I mean, it was a, it wasn't a space where you were sitting out in front of your your place and. Neighbors would be walking by you.
Sure.
You know, one could be used for access, the other could be used for more of this private patio experience. I I was just curious.
Well, and I thi- I think in my mind that that is a possibility. I mean, we could, because of the way the units are separated. We I think there's not necessarily a reason for people to necessarily walk by your unit. And so they it could be fenced and separated if we wanted them to be that way. Um, because like I said, the they all, every unit has access through the unit back to the internal um, walkway. So in theory, on this out external walkway that goes around the outside of the buildings, if they were closed to their neighbors. And only accessible to the front of the unit, it would be no different really, if that makes sense.
Yeah, gotcha.
And to that that point, um, looking at pictures of the French corridor, you can see that there are chairs and whatnot on the balconies. But I might note that a lot of the the balconies are pretty ornate and kind of conceal that space. Um, whereas the renderings uh, here are very open view and just maybe perhaps if you do break it up. And think about sitting areas to to think through how that would interact with the street if you do it on the street side.
I like your ideas, Jenna. I mean, I already, I want it to be clean lines, Jason and his beer chairs. Might not.
And that and that brings up a point too, that I know we addressed, and I think it was conditioned. I don't remember how it was ultimately written. About those street front balconies and not wanting those to become mini storage, outdoor storage with bikes hanging off them and kayaks hanging off them. And not that we don't want to encourage outdoor activities and exercise, but when those become storage units, it, you know. Dramatically affects the character of the building in the street front.
And we'll put some, we'll put some governance together on these sites and and management and uh, contracts and such, so. We won't do something as formal as an HOA, but we'll do a. A covenants of some some kind.
But I do think that at least right now, now, like I said, maybe we find out that we can make these balconies seven feet instead of five feet. And maybe there's a little more space on them, which makes it a little easier at least to have the lawn chair and sit while people walk by. Uh, but that right now at five feet, if you even put a bicycle out there, it's gonna be obstructing the movement across them. That's, these are pretty small walkways as as we're looking at them now, so. Uh, yeah, I do think we're gonna basically restrict anything from being stored outside these units.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Um, ooh, real quick, Jenna. Can we at least get, I know one of the the purposes of this pre-app is to kind of understand what uh, other materials we need to submit. Um, to continue to move this application forward as an application. Um, you know, because there's a long list of materials needed for the application. But we're also allowed to waiver a bunch of those if they're not necessary, at least for our formal submittal of our application. So can we get kind of a? Update on what else needs to be submitted?
I think I think we can do that offline, um, because there needs to be adequate for the staff re- is enough information for the staff report. Um, to be completed as well as all the legalities taken through or taken care of.
Gotcha.
We can do that offline.
Okay, that's perfect.
So just kind of as a brief recap.
So just kind of as a brief recap from Hannah and Jenna's comments as well as commissioners. Um, we'll take a look at the four required parking spaces as interpreted by staff as well as the alternative means from eight point four D. And then in addition to that, um uh for for the staff report will include in our narrative um approval of the condition for for the privacy fence if needed. And then we'll ensure that we have the blazing calculations mentioned as well as the plant uh calculations in question. Is there any other uh action items we'd like to reiterate for for the applicant?
Labree's comments on the door entryway.
Oh, yes, yeah. Making sure that the residential units are clearly identified. Yes.
Yeah.
And just outlining the garbage plan, so that's in the formal proposal.
Yeah.
And the perimeter landscaping on how to handle that one side.
Yep. And then whatever's going on to the east so that we know we don't need perimeter landscaping along the alley.
Got it.
Some some sort of uh I don't know if it's an agreement or what, just to, yes, we're going to use this access. We have our own buffer.
Well, like I said, I think the only person who's not part of this project uh is Searl's Place. They already have a fencing and landscaping buffer back there. Uh but they also want access to the alley. So I don't know if you feel like you want a letter from them, but everybody else who owns property there is here are part of this project. I don't know. Derek, does that, is that enough for you?
You got it. I'm just, I'm just considering if Searl's Place sold and did something and somebody did something different there, they'd have a driveway on zero lot line. And everywhere else, everywhere else that needs a buffer on your side, not on their side.
Right, right, right. Yeah, uh we can, we can get something from Searls at least. Uh I don't think it's going to be a problem. We can have something from Becky.
Yeah, and I mean, I I understand Park thirty three you're involved with, but you know, I don't know. Or a lot, um you know, something there too that that acknowledges that.
For Park thirty three, you said?
Yeah.
No, I understand that you're involved in Park thirty three, but the corner lot, you know, that Jerry owns, you know, he may change his mind midway through this project and then someone else.
He he's in the easement. He's locked in the easement with verbiage on how, how he accesses.
Okay.
Great. I think those were the points. Thank you guys so much for all your comments and truly
Yeah.
Uh this will make for a better design, so we appreciate the time on this one.
Alright, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Guys.
Alright, uh uh thank you again. And the next item for discussion is Design Review Fiscal Year twenty twenty two, number eighteen. Asmere Alec is proposing um a new structure located at one twelve West Forty Second Street. Um Mister As or Alec, very similar uh conversation, but so that they can hear you if you wouldn't mind uh uh coming up to the podium for discussion.
Okay, okay. Uh hi, my name is Asmere and um we are, we are getting ready. Um I don't have a big talk like Jason and Hannah, that they're awesome up there. We are putting a little structure right behind our dealership, uh because we do want to put a classic cars on there. So it would be like a a building that's really nicely designed. And uh we would have classic cars in there. If there's anybody, I mean, I can always answer anything if I need to answer any questions, but.
Um. Mister Alec, did you receive the the staff report and were you able to read through that?
Uh I I did. I I I read through it. So we followed up with all the requirement that you guys wanted, the sidewalk, the landscaping.
Okay. And then I think probably um one of the the bigger things that maybe we can start off on is the structure itself um with regards uh to the code requirements.
Yeah, it looks like that that's just a metal building.
Yeah, yes, it is. It is. It's got, we we ordered the building from All American Steel. That it's all industrial metal building and then it will have, because we're gonna create it to be like a little showroom for all the classic cars and all that inside in the in the building. So all the doors that are on there, they're all glass doors. And then it has the three windows that face Forty Second Street. If you would look on that design right there, you cannot see the doors because they are not included with the building. Uh we had to buy them from All American Garage Door Place. So the doors are all glass and then the landscaping facing Forty Second Street, there will be few trees that would go up towards the building and it would would hit the 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 glass windows that are three three feet wide and six feet apart. So they're pretty huge windows on the side. Uh that that place will look really nice. I mean, we know that it looks like a a a metal structural building, but if you guys Google Lazi's Car Company where we at, we want to make it look nice with 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 all that landscaping and the windows.
Yeah, I guess I guess I'm just having a hard time with the, you know, it actually being a prohibited structure. Um and not, you know, no glazing on the on the end elevations, no glazing at pedestrian scale on the right sidewall elevation. Um it's just, it takes a, it takes a lot of doing to make this not look like a prefab metal building.
Yeah, along those lines, I mean, the the way that we've treated uh structures, the prefab uh pre-engineered metal buildings, if you will, is that they really need to be uh uh scanned or have have other finished material components to them and appropriate amount of fenestrations, glass windows and um that really makes them, though the the actual structural component is a pre-engineered structure, it doesn't look like a pre-engineered metal building.
Yeah, and and I think by the time that building will be built, it will not look like a a metal building that we have right now all over Garden City. This, it it will look really nice. And I wouldn't be opposed if we would need it to put uh I have a couple of bodies that that know how to do uh a brick walls like go up three feet or six feet. I don't think we should do six, but maybe fourth feet up from the ground, we could put a uh like a forgot what you call that language, like like some kind of.
Well, it's, I think what you're read, what you're talking about is like a wainscote.
Yeah, like like, and it would look like rock going up, you know, three feet if you needed to do that on the side to beautify the building a little bit more.
I I that in my mind's not going to get it there. Uh but whatever you think that you're going to want to do, we're going to need to see that in in the drawings, we're going to need to see exactly what it is, what the materials are, what the colors are uh in order to be able to evaluate and um move this through the process. This, I mean, what's what's here now requires too much, um how should we say, imagination for for me to get to something that we can either approve or not approve. I mean, it's just, what's what's here now is not, in in my mind, is it does not meet the code.
Yeah, and and a couple of other things, just big, big picture things is um you know, roof line, changes in the roof line over a certain, I think it's over fifty feet, we need articulation in the roof line. Um as well as, you know, you need a, you need a primary entry off of off of the street that looks like an entry, it has covered element, it has some sort of architectural character that makes it look like an entry. Um and then looking at the site as a whole. Um I don't know if there's a way to be, you know, it looks like there's a showroom on Forty Second Street and then it's a gravel parking lot for the rest of that. If we can minimize the curb cuts that are coming off of Stockton, because the you know, one of the city's priorities is that that's more pedestrian bicycle friendly. And so to go from, you know, what it is now, which has no activity to have a lot of um have a lot of auto connectivity coming on and off of Stockton.
I know.
If we can live at that curb cut to uh you know, two or one, it looks like one's going to parking and then there's two large ones that are going into the the gravel lot.
Okay. So what do we need to do right now to, like, I I feel like I've been here like three times so far. So what do we need to do right now to make this, to see what we need done? Here, so do we need to have a architect redrawn all the drawings? Because you guys are not allowing steel buildings in Garden City? Is that why?
I I mean, ul- ul- ultimately, yeah, ultimately it needs to be, you know, it needs to meet meet code and if if steel prefab buildings are not uh not meeting code, then it needs to it needs to be rot- redrawn to meet that.
Okay, and that the drawing that we have now, that does not meet the code because the building looks too plain. It does not look too beautified for the area that we are in right now.
There is a section um eight four C dash five. Uh says there no evi- visible false fronts, prefabricated structures or prohibited materials proposed with this application. Oh, there is. There are.
So it's um
It says there are no, but th- there basically are. I mean, this is a prefabricated structure and there is specific language in the code that that precludes us approving a a prefabricated metal building in its standard format, which is what's being proposed. Which is a prefabricated structure with with uh metal siding.
And I think maybe an example that I'm thinking of is the it may have ended up being a brewery or something over by the fairgrounds where it came in very prefab looking and then through the design assess the that the architect went through, it ended up looking less than prefab. It had entries that had canopies. It was a different scope. It had a different end use, but um I think at the end of the day, it was, you know, prefabricated trusses that created a a custom building.
Um Derek, are you thinking of the the structures that were off of uh Sawyer? So maybe all worth in Sawyer Corner is that maybe the one you were?
It was on a big curve.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the one?
Yeah, that's, you're talking about um uh cutting edge?
Yes.
Cutting edge landscape, which is across from the uh the track.
Across from the track, yeah. And there was an existing they were working around an existing uh kind of loading dock.
Mm-hmm. And I I know the ones and we can certainly provide you as an an example of how that um ended up. Um so you can see what the committee is talking about. And then we can also make sure that you have that eight four five C or excuse me, eight four five eight four C five C language, so that you see what they're talking about in code as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I just remembered that.
An- another one that comes to mind is the Powderhouse Brewery, which is a pre-engineered metal structure, I believe as well. So I think there's some examples of
One guy.
What has been approved using a pre-engineered metal building like the one that you you've ordered here that you can look to and kind of maybe get it, get a better understanding of what's acceptable versus what's not.
Yeah, I and I don't want to put a building that it doesn't not, I mean, I know the whole structure looks like a a metal building, but we want to have high-end classy cars in there. So the building will look I mean, we are in a i- structure like uh Garden City, I feel like is becoming that town of kind of like more art and all, you know, when you go up and down the road, you you see binaries, you see all these big doors you see all these different things. So so I kind of want to make my place to look kind of like that too. You know, where it feels, where you have that welcoming feeling of wanting to go and and buy a classy car or something, where you feel like, oh, I want to get in there and look at these cars because it's Father's Day and I just want to walk down there or Mother Day or whatever it is, that you can just walk in. I want to make it inviting and good looking. So I feel like every time I came in here, I was like, okay, what do we need done? We need landscaping. This is the building that we're gonna put up the day one that we had it, we all had that same building that we came, that we wanted to do it. And I proposed that if we could put a a facade of of whatever it is, took three feet around the the building to beautify it even more. And by that door, I'm totally cool to put an onyx and set an exit that's on there too. You know, on that one door that you guys see there. I mean, that one door, we could put an onyx on top and we could put entrance right there too. Plus all the big doors, those are entrance too, because they will be all glass. So all those doors would be glass. And if we need to get an architect to redraw that again, then, I mean, that's what we need to to do so you guys can have a more visual thing and we can come delayed everything else. And then come again and come again. For us small guys, it's kind of hard to get, you know, with all these big guys when they come in and they tell you, oh, we're gonna do this. Everybody agrees with it, you know, but the smaller guys, I feel like it's always so much harder to get where you need to go because you know, they wanted a a sidewalk. We agreed to go ahead with sidewalk when we were here last time. They wanted landscaping. We agreed with landscaping and the whole place is there, is not going to operate it as a business. It's more like a storage facility where we're gonna park cars in there, because our main building is in the front of Chindon. So this is gonna be behind in an alley, where is an alley? Where right now there's trailer parks all over and it's not really pretty. And we tried to make it a little bit nicer by putting the building and landscaping to beautify that area that we are right now, right there. And I feel like, I don't know how often you guys drive down Chindon Road, but I try to keep my place the nicest out there from all the other dealerships that are on that road, because we do go and sweep our sweet uh a street, we pick our weeds, you know, we we try to clean and maintain the whole area really nicely. So I'm not gonna put a structure up where somebody would come over and be like, holy cow, are we in like a turmoil country where this building gonna burn up? It's it's a will be, i- i- it's going to look really nice.
I I think there's no doubt that uh you have every intention to of doing things that look nice. Um the committee is charged with making sure that the Garden City code is adhered to. And so they're reviewing the code in your application. And um we we can send you some of the examples of taking something that uh is akin to your your proposal and and um perhaps that'll spur some ideas of of how you can move forward.
Can, how long will that take? Like another three months, two months? Because I feel like I I started this project way back. So how long would that take? You know, how long is 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 that period gonna be like, okay, I mean, is this gonna be next year? By then we get some kind of approval man. Um.
And so the two that uh have been noted, um we can send you a link very soon. Um we do have other applications tonight, so maybe maybe not tonight, but in the very, very near future, certainly not a long term timeframe.
So something that we, I could come back tomorrow and talk about this, if we get an architect to resign or draw the whatever they are looking for.
Uh you would need to bring your ideas and resubmit your ideas. Uh, you would need to bring your ideas and resubmit your ideas, uh, for the review.
So just another drawing and then you guys would like. Okay, that would be nice if I could like give an answer like rather than not wait, because we had such a long period. Of the building, what this building was a, a metal building. And then we had such a long period and we all knew that it was a metal building. It could have been like, hey Ozzy, you cannot put a metal building. You have to have more. Not only about landscaping, but you have to have more windows, more doors, uh. Different kind of type of walls. You can approve certain amount metal on there. It would have been nice to go through that, not to have to wait. You know, a month and a half till this hearing came and then now we are here and now we have to be like, oh. We have to change tanks again. And it costs money all the time. Every time you call one of those architects or designers, they're like, oh, it's gonna cost you, it doesn't matter, we done it, but we're gonna have to do it again. Because it's gonna cost you more money to do it. So it's, it's, it's kind of not. Because we all knew that there was a, a metal building that came in here. But I, I guess we'll, we'll get those papers. Whatever you guys have that. Other people haven't then. I mean, there's nothing I can do besides have you guys tell me what to do. So I, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll wait for those papers. And then I'll, we submit it again and both on there.
Yeah, I think it'll just show you some examples of, you know, what, uh, what projects have done. Like cutting edge and like the brewery where, you know, at the end of the day, it doesn't look like it's a, it's a prefab barn that. You know, is so ubiquitous around the. Around the neighborhood and, and is more, you know, industrial in nature. I think where the, where the city's trying to go is to create an environment that's more pedestrian friendly and bike friendly and, um. You know, bringing, bringing people to these businesses without, um, without having to arrive in a car.
Awesome. Okay, cool. Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, um. And the last application discussion for the evening is designer review fiscal year twenty twenty-two, number nineteen. Uh, Chad Welfson with Herstadd Architects is requesting. A review for new construction of a multifamily next to structure located at four zero four four Adam Street. Um, and hello.
Great. Uh, thank you Jenna and Hannah and, uh. Committee members, um, good to see you again. Um, so I think you've all seen the project at this point, the application, but I'll just do a real brief introduction. And then kind of go, um. Point by point. Point by point through the few items that were, uh, highlighted in the staff report. As needing more information, I don't want to remain. But, um. As you know, the project's located at forty forty-four Adam Street. Um, it is, uh. Obviously separate from our boardwalk development, but it is contiguous with it at its back property line. Uh, we are in the, uh, R three zone. Um, comprehensive plan. Uh, designations are activity node, neighborhood destination, main street corridor and mixed-use residential. Um, it is a. Uh, this, the, the zoning allows us, I should say limits us to sixteen, uh, multifamily units. And that is in fact what we're proposing, um, with an automated parking system within. To go through some of the items in the staff report. There were some concerns, uh, eight dash four D. Um, staff has concerns regarding the turning radius within the garage, especially for vehicles leaving and integrated. Leaving and entering the automated parking lifts. We are designing this, um, the, the turn-ins to the, to the lift spaces to be basically no different than turning in. To a fixed parking space, um, but we do understand you want to see a little bit more information on. Exact turning radiuses and making sure that it works with the automated parking system. Um, we're still in discussions with a few different, uh. Uh, vendors for those systems and depending on the exact one. Um, the specific layout and, and footprint of those lifts and exactly where they're located is still being adjusted somewhat. And in fact, um, as late as just this morning, we had a conversation with, uh, one of them. And, uh, we're in agreement that it probably will work better if we pull those lifts away from the north, uh, building face just a little bit. Um, it'll have very little impact visually on the building design and it may lend to a, uh, an easier radius to turn into those lifts. Although it was not highlighted, highlighted in your staff report, uh, eight dash forty dash five required number of off-street parking spaces. Um, this morning we were afforded, um, a letter, um, from a neighbor, James Herbert. Um, who has stated some concerns over the number of, uh, parking spaces. Um, just wanted to go ahead and address that a little bit as best I can. Our position is that this is not a parking garage. Um, this is a multifamily building. It's designed to look like a multifamily building. The entire street facing front is all multifamily units. Uh, we are in fact hiding the parking component back away from the street as best we can. We're, we're maxing out the number of residential units allowed, um, further en- enforcing the fact that this is multifamily. As the staff report, uh, indicates, uh, there's no compliance issues noted because there is no code maximum for number of spaces that. That we can provide on the site with multifamily. Um, our understanding is that. You know, the city wants more parking in this area. Um, we know that more parking is needed. We see this as a great opportunity to provide a little more. Than specifically these sixteen units need, uh, because, uh, the last thing we want is as the boardwalk. Uh, project comes online. Um, if it's, uh, as successful as we hope it is. Um, we think that parking demand, despite what code requires, we actually think we're gonna need more parking. Um, and so we do not intend for this building to house transient parking. Um, our intent in providing a little more parking than needed for these sixteen units. Is, uh, first of all, to satisfy our requirement from the boardwalk conditions of approval. That actually require us to have some o- additional off-site parking. So this is a great location for that. Um, as well as to provide, um, a place for some of the tenants of the boardwalk building to park. So that some of the parking around the boardwalk building can be freed up for the retail patrons. To prevent them from just lining the streets, which I think is the last thing the neighbors want to see. Uh, moving on down. Um, eight dash four G sustainable development provisions. Uh, we understand that we will need to comply with the sustainability checklist and, um, we have no problem with that. We've, uh. Uh, done that for other projects and that's, that's an easy thing for us to comply with. Um, eight dash four I dash three general landscaping standards, irrigation provisions. Um, totally understand, we have not yet provided, uh, a landscape design, um, same with eight dash four I dash four. Um, our team does understand the requirements and we don't have any pushback or problem, uh, meeting those. Well, same with eight dash four I dash seven, uh, the tree preservation provisions, um, we understand that and we'll make sure that we mitigate as needed. For the few trees that are on site. Eight dash four L dash five open space, uh, multi, uh, open space standards for multifamily developments. Um, as noted in the staff report, we did tabulate our common space, uh. Common open space, um. Pro- what we provided there and we're in compliance with that. As far as the, uh, private open space. Um, we understand that as well and, and we are in compliance, even though we didn't note the dimensions of the individual patios. Uh, but we intend to satisfy that through each unit having a patio of sufficient size and we'll make that clear in our final application. I believe that's all I had. Uh, we don't have any specific questions for you. Um, we look forward to. Submitting another successful project with you guys and we appreciate your help today and, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Welfson? I, I, I do have one, um. Related to the. The intended interaction between four O eight place and this lot. And if there's been consideration. Should there be, um. Redevelopment, I don't know what that lot is, but there's a connection. Through to Forty First Street. Do you think that there would ever? Would this line to allow for some sort of a connection, I guess?
But can you explain it a little more between what and what?
I'm not verbalizing it very well. Um, can you see that thus far away?
A little bit.
And so here's the proposal.
Right.
And then I, I'm discussing the connection. Between, between which, the streets, if there's any.
Between, uh, Forty and Forty First?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, we already have, um, pedestrian connections through. The boardwalk project between Forty and Forty First. We do also have a pedestrian connection off of Adam Street here through this project. That can go back and access that same series of paths.
Back to the, the apartment.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
That's, um, if you're interested, that's shown on the architectural site plan A one point zero. Along the east side of the building. Path that goes from Adam Street to the back and then on around four O eight place.
Thank you. And the trees on that plan answer the other question too.
And so the, the vendors you're talking to as well. I know there was some concern about. Turning the cars around. So that's anticipated on an upper floor. That a car drives into elevator, goes up and then it comes out. Facing forward. Is that correct?
Uh, that, that is correct. That's, that's the way we explained it. We, um, we're still, you know, it's obviously. Um, still in the schematic design level of the project and so we're working through some of the very specifics of the parking system, but. Um, we did just learn that it may be better for our configuration to actually. Provide a turntable at the ground floor. So that you pull in forward and, you know, once your car comes back down, that is where, that is where it turns by itself, so that it's facing forward. Um, that actually, by, by doing that, it will actually, uh, save us height in the floor to floors above, which otherwise. Again, we're talking a lot of kind of very specifics here, but, um, one way or another, we understand the, the, the intent and. Will meet it either way is that you pull in forward and your car comes out facing. The other way so that you can pull out forward.
And, and I, I'd have a concern too, and this is all your, all your math and turning radiuses and sizes of elevators and stuff like that, but. What my gut reaction is that, you know, anyone with a Idaho-sized truck is limited. And unable to use this, so it, this gets parked full of all of the. Compact cars and medium-sized cars and then, and, uh, ending up on the street is all the, you know, oversized trucks, et cetera.
Yeah, we were actually planning on providing, um. An array, um, I think what we showed in our sections in this, um. Package. Uh, even though we show cars, this is actually the height needed to get SUVs at each level, um. And we're still playing around with the exact balance. We may have one of the levels go to just a sedan height accommodation. Allowing another level to use the balance of that space for SUVs with roof racks or, or, you know, rocket boxes on top, that kind of thing. So, um, we're still playing through, um, the exact proportioning of which levels will accommodate which size vehicles and, and the systems can be programmed to. Recognize heights and not, you know, obviously park vehicles only where they're not gonna scrape the roof and things, but. Um, your, your point is well taken and it's, uh, certainly not the first time we've considered that, that. Tends to have bigger vehicles.
Right, yeah. And longer. I was thinking length more than height.
I, I guess I think, I think it's a little bit. It's a little bit debatable on whether this is a multifamily project or not. And so I don't know if maybe the code is a little bit gray on that or. It really isn't, uh, but I mean, when you got sixty-five percent of the building, that's a parking garage. And thirty-five percent. That is a residential component. I guess for me, it's a, it's a stretch. To say that this building is. Uh, multifamily and is not. A parking garage. I mean, if there's, and if there is no, there is no, uh, specific threshold. Then I guess what we're saying is that. Somebody can come in with, you know, a hundred thousand square feet, uh, storage building and. Put some units, you know, small number of units on there and call it a more, multi-family project in a neighborhood that. Or in a zoning that. Would not necessarily straight out support, uh, a parking garage or a large storage structure without any type of a. Uh, conditionally used process or something of that nature, then, you know, I, I, I guess I think it really. It probably needs to be a little bit more. Uh, thought put to whether. This. Type of, uh, a project, how it's configured here really. Uh, is be, you know, per the code. Considered a multifamily and considered, uh, allowed in, in this zoning, the way it's being presented. Yeah, I think, I think the impacts that it has. On the surrounding areas and the neighborhood that it's in, is an impact of a parking garage. Not the impact of a. Multifamily residential development. The traffic impact. The, the pedestrian impact, I mean. It, it's, it's not the same. And it doesn't have the same impact on neighboring residential uses. That a residential. Multifamily project would have, in my opinion. And I don't know that. You know, unless maybe the, the staff can. Point out some areas that support. That. In the code. Or it. Or bring some light to, you know, how it's. How it's specifically addressed, what we're looking at here in, in the code. Then, yeah, I, I just have a hard time. Looking at this. And, and seeing that it doesn't impact the neighborhood like a, a parking garage would.
And that's the CUP component in essence, right?
Yep. Cause I don't, I don't think that, that a parking garage would be, uh. Uh, just an approved use in that zoning, but I could be wrong, maybe, you know, but. I guess that, that's a question for staff.
I, I believe it's actually prohibited as a parking facility. I'm gonna double check myself so I don't misspeak.
I mean, visually, I get it. The visual impact on the street frontage, it's designed, putting those units up front, it has that. Visual impact of a multifamily. Uh, project, but everything else, no.
Right. And, and having said that, like, I wish every parking garage in air quotes. Looked like this, right? From the street, it doesn't look like a parking garage and that, and that's great. That's what's great about it. But, uh, I he- I hear what you're saying about the, you know, the impacts are certainly of something greater than multifamily.
Yeah, if it was parked for its use. Then that's, that to me would not be a sixty-five percent difference. In, uh. You know, we've got a, uh. Forty-two, forty-two thousand square feet of parking. Out of a sixty-six thousand square foot building. I mean, it's just. It's upside down. Considerably. So. I know that's, uh. I wouldn't be able to. To support that, that kind of a condition unless I, I, I knew that. Code absolutely supports this being able to go through without any kind of a conditional use process or the rest of that.
And then just to, to verify, a parking facility is prohibited in R one, two and three, so R three. And as a conditional use in all other zoning districts.
So it couldn't even go here without a without a rezone of that and. Yeah.
Well, I guess I guess I'd look for some clarity from from staff and and from. The planning director. It was our understanding that. You know, this isn't the the first time that this idea was brought forth. It was our understanding that. Trying to get a little more parking in this area in the way that we were, as long as we are. You know. Maxing out the residential intent of what we're allowed to do under the code. That not only would it be supported but and allowed, but. Actually smiled upon. So I I guess it's just a little bit different. Direction than thought we had heard before.
And so for for direction, I in disclosure, I have spoken with Mr. Talbot. Mike Talbot about this and asking if. There could be additional parking. And associated with another use and code does not give a maximum. Parking. Ratio. And so in that. Regard, I think that there you certainly at this point in time can. Quote unquote overpark. Under code. And then I will also read the definition of parking facility. And that's in eight seven A one. And that's the primary use for parking vehicles. The term parking facility includes surface and garages. And so. And I'm hearing. The committee, the comments from the committee because of. Because of the amount of additional parking where there's the sixty-five percent and thirty-five percent. Feel that they're not comfortable that it's. It's truly the just overparked that perhaps it's a parking facility. And and meeting that term of parking facility versus the multi-family. And so I I guess that's where I'll leave that on on the discussion.
Yeah, I I guess it would have to in in my mind. It would have to be a secondary function. Which. Which those the ratios of square footage does not indicate. That it's secondary. It indicates to me that it is the primary function. Of this structure.
And what? What metric would be used to measure the primary and and secondary?
Probably the simplest would be the majority. Us, you know, probably a simple majority in in my mind would have to be so. Less than fifty percent of the area of the structure. Would have to be parking. You know, for it, I mean. Having it not be something that is specifically. Stated someplace in the definitions in the code, primary versus secondary. Maybe it is. I don't know. But I guess in my mind, it would at least have to meet. You know. That. Under under fifty percent. I would think.
Square footage basis.
I don't know how how else you would, you know, how else to to look at it, but I I guess what would I? My feeling. Is that what's being presented here does not meet. That the primary function of this is the apartments. So I don't know if that's if it's a. A square footage or. Number. Number of parking stalls, but with what is? If I was to look at be something being overparked. This is to the extreme. And this, it it's not just overparked, it's it's parking for other uses. And not this use. And I don't know that that is really. What overparking a use means. Overparking a use would mean, yeah, we're providing more guest parking for our guests that are coming to this. Multi-family complex than we feel is necessary just to make it easier for and not for. We're gonna provide all this parking for these neighboring functions and uses and. And.
So how does then, I mean, I I follow your thinking there. We'll certainly have to go back and evaluate. Whether the project still works if we were to reduce parking to the point where we're less than fifty percent on a floor area basis. I mean, a parking space plus part of a drive aisle that you need behind it. Pretty quickly adds up an area, but even for the required. Parking spaces, add in the guest ones and whatnot. Is there? Some accommodation for the fact that. You know, our our boardwalk apartments, our boardwalk development. The approval required us to do. Some off-site parking within X number of feet of that project. And this is a great spot to do that.
But it's but it's. It's in a zoning that is. It's in a residential zoning. And it's sandwiched between residential properties. It's it's.
It was looking for.
On one side, but yeah.
Yeah, I was looking for additional parking that wasn't prohibited. Right? And I think that. I think that if. I don't know. It almost seems like if this was presented as one greater. You know, if this was part of the greater project and not standing alone, then it wouldn't seem like a multi-family that's overparked. It would seem like a parking garage for the greater project. So it's kind of unfortunate that it's coming to us by itself. And in the zoning that's coming in.
And I kind of wanna play a little bit of devil's advocate, just knowing the parking code. And how the higher density proposals require a lot more parking. So what? At what point in time does a parking garage for a high-density multi-family? Start to take up. Fifty percent of the project just to adequately park it for code requirements. Is is the problem with this application? The amount of parking because they are installing. That vending machine parking. System. And so they're allowed to get that higher density parking or is it? Is it the square footage of parking?
I don't, I guess I don't know if it's a square footage or. You look at the maximum or the required amount of parking stalls. That the multi-family component needs. And. You know, how that relates to the, you know, hundred additional stalls or whatever it is that it doesn't need and you looked at, oh my, you know. That in itself. Is. You know, the primary function is to park everything else except for. The building occupants. And so that right there is, you know, indicates that. The primary function is not. The the multi-family. It just. I I can't get there. From from what's being presented here to 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 feel that, I mean, if it. If it walks like a duck. I mean. Everything points to this is a parking garage to me. I don't have, I I guess I don't have to look too far.
Yeah, and I guess I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to draw out your point Hannah, and maybe that's that. This is so efficient because they're using a lift system that it creates. Many, if this was a traditional parking garage with ramps and turn radiuses for the ramps, it would it would have half the amount of parking, but. They're almost being penalized for being so efficient because it adds so much quantity of parking. Is that?
Yeah, yeah, that was.
Okay, yeah, and and. And point being too, that should be addressed and noted and. Applauded is that I've been waiting for someone to do this, right? I've been waiting for someone to put a lift in for parking because it is so hard to park. Projects in Garden City. To the, you know, code required parking that this is this is bound to happen and this is the first time we've seen it and I wanna applaud that because it is a brilliant solution, whether it's. Just parking the sixteen units for itself. Or whether it's parking, you know, a kind of code required offsite. You know, parking agreement, that's. It's smart and I'm glad I'm glad we're finding finally seeing it in in one fashion or another.
So back to the the notion that we're talking about, kind of, you know, trying to get under fifty percent of the floor area. Is it, I think, fair to say that? The. The multi-family. The actual multi-family part of the building. And. It's required parking. Area. Would need to be fifty-one percent or greater.
Yeah, you're definitely gonna include the required parking for that multi-family component and I would I would suggest to. You know, I would suggest that the required parking for the multi-family. Can be overparked to some degree, but not five X, right? Or what or whatever it is, right? So. I would, I would, if it's if it's a strictly mathematical answer, which I don't know that it needs to be. You know, I would suggest that. There's the. Square footage of the multi-family component. There's the square footage of that required parking, overpark that sum. But it's the five X or whatever the math ends up to be on this that it's overparked that I think is what puts it into a walks like a duck. That Brett was mentioning.
Yeah. And and just for the record, not that this is a substantial difference, but. I wanted to point out two things. One, there was a typo, a miscount on our application, the total number of spaces. To be provided was actually one thirteen, not one eighteen. And we're the number of required parking spaces. Ends up being twenty-nine. And then again, we were trying to satisfy the off-site parking requirement from Boardwalk, which was fourteen. So. By that metric, it's a little over two X in terms of being overpart. And I I think we hear you. We hear your concern. I'm willing to go back, kind of do some of these takeoffs and calc and see where where we are landing, because I I really don't know offhand if you, you know, once we cal. Figure in. The area of the required parking and look at that as a percentage of the overall. I really don't know where we're landing, so. I think we hear your concern and. I guess we'll go back and take a look. Nate, did you have anything else to add to the conversation?
They probably can't hear you unless you speak through the microphone.
Hello, guys. Nathan Talbot with Vita Properties. Just a clarification question. R three is what we're zoned as and is it's it's zoned as a multi-use property, correct?
I believe your your R three, so.
That's residential.
It would be residential.
Yeah, okay. Let's save it for me at this time.
Thank you.
Any other? Questions for me?
Not I.
Seeing. Seeing none. Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
And that brings us to the end of this meeting. If there are no discussion, I can't think of anything to come. Any updates from staff?
Nothing for me.
Great. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Next time. Thank you.